All right. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the virtual BOS meeting of Thursday, October 8th, 2020. And as usual, we will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance for the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes of September 15th, 2020?
Lauren Raven, I motion that we approve the minutes from our Board of Selectmen meeting on September 15th, 2020.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to accept, approve the minute, Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of September 22nd, 2020?
Lauren Raven, I motion to approve the minutes from our Board of Selectmen meeting on September 22nd, 2020.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you. And we have one more. Is there a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes of September 22nd?
Lauren Raven, I motion to approve the minutes from our Board of Selectmen special meeting that was held on September 22nd, 2020.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We will now go on to the updates. Let's start off with the first Selectmen's updates. As we have been talking about town halls reopening in a few days on Tuesday, so we're going to be going from eight to one. We, everybody will be required to wear a mask. We have masks on this side of the, of the desks in Town Hall. People are pretty much spaced out and we do have sanitizing stations. So we should be set. We'll have somebody at the front door. And we'll be monitoring it and looking at even a couple other safety precautions to be put in place hopefully by Tuesday. So with that, looking forward to seeing, welcoming the public back, at least on a part-time basis. And hopefully we'll continue to see, have success with this pandemic battle. As we heard yesterday, the seven-day rolling average, I believe Greenwich is well ahead of the, is well ahead of the state average and Fairfield County. Per 100,000 people, even though we only have 63,000 here, we're about 1.1. I think the state was at 4.18. And we are, the seven-day rolling average with the 63,000 people, I think we're at like 0.7. So we're doing really well. But with that said, again, we're still in the middle of it. So we're keeping our eye on the ball with that. The Halloween guidelines, we will be putting them out in the coming weeks. We do plan to go ahead with it. But we're going to caution people. I've spoken to lots of residents. Many are happy it's going forward. But some are still nervous about people coming to their house. So they're going to keep, they're going to be dark. They're going to keep the lights off. We will keep reminding people that if you see a house that's dark, please don't go up to it. That's, there's a reason why it's dark. And they're just not there yet. For the ones that do, that will be giving out candy, and I count myself in that group, just be wearing a mask when you answer the door and keep a distance. And hopefully things will go well. I do think probably there will be some people who probably won't go out because of it. But we're getting lots of calls and people are excited about it. So we'll do it in a very cautious manner. And hopefully it will be a good memory for everybody. The, we do have the task force, Storm Preparedness Task Force report. Barb's away. We were going to release this week, but we're going to, we'll do it next week. We're just cleaning it up a little bit, but looking forward to getting that out there to the public. The Reimagine Greenwich endeavor is going on. And I spoke with one of the town residents who had a great idea the other day. And she was saying that because we're all, you know, we're looking around in the different areas of town and trying to work with those neighborhood associations. She suggested why don't we, we should probably do, take the Reimagine Greenwich, which is really focused on Sounder Greenwich and spread it around. So you'd have a, your, your efforts in Riverside could be Reimagine Riverside, Glenville, Reimagine Glenville, Reimagine Byram. I thought it was kind of, kind of consistent and neat, a neat idea. So I guess we'll be, you know, speaking with our friends in the neighborhood associations and getting their take on that. But I kind of like that. The windstorm update last night, Dan Wurzow, our emergency operations director, said there were very little damage. We dodged a bullet. No power outages that were called in, which is good. Hopefully that stays that way. And the first Selectmen's Energy Committee, we're going to, I spoke with Lauren and Jill, who runs our Sustainability Committee. We're going to have that come out of the Board of Selectmen and hopefully get it on the agenda in two weeks. So we can get going on that. It's something that we've talked about before. We were going to put it through as a commission last year. And it was, there was a lot of pushback on the RTM as far as a commission. But the, those who I concern seem to be very supportive of the committee idea. So at the end of the day, whether it's a committee or commission, as long as it's, it does its work and moves the ball down the field for us and really starts to address having a really comprehensive energy policy here in town, that's all that really matters. So we'll, we'll give it 200% to make sure this really is a successful endeavor. And then lastly, we will have, the Town Hall will be closed on Monday for Columbus Day. But we will do the annual flag raising at nine o'clock. I don't believe there's going to be a dinner this year at the St. Lawrence Club, which is too bad. But they will be honoring B and Peter Crumbine this year. So they will invite people back to St. Lawrence Club right after the flag raising. And we will have a proclamation for that day and for B and Peter. And as you know, Peter was a five-time Selectman. And B is the, the official ambassador for Greenwich and is really the architect of the sister cities relationship that Greenwich has with Mora de Santis and Rose Calabria, two Italian cities. So it's very fitting that those two are being honored. So we look forward to seeing them at nine o'clock on Monday and everybody else. So with that, thank you. And we'll go to the Select Woman update. We'll go Lauren Raven first. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning. Thanks, Fred. So just a few updates. I had mentioned before that I had been working with the Commission on Aging on their strategic plan. So we completed that work. So the plan draft will actually go to that board for approval. We have been meeting as Reimagine Greenwich. All the materials are up on the website, future meetings, minutes, recordings, all that good stuff. But I think what people will either be happy or concerned about, maybe mostly happy, is the advertising signs, the banners on the posts on Greenwich Avenue are coming down. There was a bit of a delay because of COVID as well as having the vendor get paid for some previous work, but that, that's happening. And we've also started to talk about merging Reimagine Greenwich with Think Greenwich. Because our needs for the public-private partnership has certainly evolved since Think Greenwich was created. Also working with Greenwich Green and Clean to replace the arrangements that are in the planters on Greenwich Avenue. So right now they're the Crete Myrtle and more of a summer planter. So working a contest with different local florists to put something more seasonal in those arrangements. And then the last thing that I'm working on, I've been attending the P O C D attainable housing task force, getting ready to make some recommendations there on how to increase the attainable slash affordable housing in the town of Greenwich on sort of our terms instead of necessarily waiting for any state mandates to come down.
Okay, thank you very much, Lauren. Appreciate it. And we'll now go to Jill for Person Oberlander's updates. Good morning, Jill.
Morning. Thank you, Fred. And thank you, Lauren. And I know a lot of people will be thrilled about both the advertising coming down and the planters, which will beautify Greenwich Avenue. I've continued to be working on the Sustainability Committee issues. And I believe yesterday was Energy Conservation Day. So, or the day before. So very, very timely for the Energy Committee as well. So something that I think will be really great for Greenwich and work well with the Sustainability Committee as well on a variety of issues. Mostly I've been responding in the last two weeks to resident inquiries and concerns. Some of which has, has had to do with voting. There is an article in today's Greenwich Time. And there was a, I believe, a presentation by the Registrar of Voters. But just briefly, for those that are listening, the Town Clerk and the Registrar of Voters have, have been on top of this. And they have different roles. So it is not too late to request an absentee ballot. You can request a ballot either by using the application that was sent by mail from the state or downloading the form from the Town Clerk's webpage. And you can deposit your request in one of the two ballot boxes in Central Greenwich, both at Town Hall and at the police headquarters. The Town Clerk advises that those ballot boxes are checked twice a day. For people who have already started returning, they're filled out ballots. And there are specific instructions on how to fill out your ballot and those who are requesting an absentee ballot. They only ask that you get your request in earlier as opposed to later, even though you can, you can ask to vote up until the last minute. But it will give them more time to turn it around and send it out. Again, also voting by absentee ballot. All voters this year are eligible to vote by absentee ballot. There's a COVID rationale on the request for absentee ballot. And you just need to check that off. And they will be accepting absentee ballots up until and through 8:00 PM on Election Day, Tuesday, November 3rd. The counting of absentee ballots is being done by the Registars Office. And they will, they are authorized to open, not process the ballots a few days early. People have been asked whether they are getting a head start. So at, after 5:00 PM on October 30th, they can start processing the ballots and they will start counting the ballots received before Election Day, on Election Day. And then any ballots received on Election Day will be counted the following day, Wednesday, November 4th. So other people have also asked about helping at the polls. And I encourage everyone to check out the Registars website. They have a lot of detail on registering, voting, and getting Election Day updates as well. So that is my public service announcement for the morning on, on voting. And, and we'll continue to work on the environment. Oh, one last thing on Greenwich Avenue as well. I've been doing some outreach with the merchants in anticipation of the public hearing that hopefully we'll be able to schedule in the next couple of weeks to start to talk about what, what Greenwich Avenue should look like for restaurants and retailers and to dovetail with the work that Lauren, the, the committee, the Reimagine Greenwich Committee is doing for Greenwich Avenue as well. So that's it. Great. Fred, thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate that. Okay, now we will go to old business. And we have to amend three terms expiration dates for three Board of Health members. So I'll turn it over to Select Woman Raven for that. First, we have up is to amend the term for the expiration date for Ann Fountain.
Ms., thanks, Fred. And just for the audience's education, these terms were, or should be four-year terms. And we did not catch that when we nominated them for three-year, nor did it get caught at the RTM. So we need to amend their expiration date. And then the RTM will vote on the new expiration date at their December meeting. So the first item is a motion to amend the term expiration date for Ann Fountain as a regular member of the Board of Health to expire on June 3rd, 2024.
Jill Oberlander, I will second that amendment.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo votes yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes. The next motion is to amend the term expiration date for Lauren O'Keefe as a member of the Board of, to a term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that amendment.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander's a yes.
Lauren Raven is yes. And then the last one, a motion to amend the term expiration date for Sarah Gamble as a member of the Board of Health to a term expiring June 30th, 2024.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that amendment.
Okay. And all those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander votes yes.
Lauren Raven votes yes.
Hey, thank you, Lauren. Going on to item D of old business, we have an update on the Edgewood Car Carrier loading slash upload, unloading issue over there. We have traffic technician Roger Dranth and town planner Katie DeLuca. Good morning.
Katie is unmuted. I don't see. Could Roger, please raise your hand?
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, Katie.
Let me move you up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Hi.
Katie, is Roger on with us?
I, I don't know.
There is Greenwich Police Department, but not sure if that's Roger.
All right, well, well.
Just raise their, the Greenwich Police Department just raised their hand.
Okay, if we could unmute.
Hello, is that you?
Yes. Yeah, can you hear us?
Yes. Good morning.
Okay, I just promoted him.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Hello, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Okay, I don't know what to lead off with an update on the situation over on Edgewood Drive with the unloading of vehicles.
Thank you. Thank you for having us back. In response to Chair, excuse me, Select Person Oberlander, she wanted some updated numbers for Edgewood Avenue. The Department of Works did go out and brought in some numbers. I don't know if you guys got this, but you were right. They were a little bit higher than Edgewood Drive. Their numbers came out to be a total of, for one week, going from September 11th through September 18th, there was 5,256 cars over that one week period, which included two days because they put out on Friday just before 11:00 and then picked up the next Friday. They had their daily average at 657. They did divide by eight, though, when it should have been by seven, because you have 24-hour periods of seven, which brings the daily average total actually up to 751 cars, which I believe the Edgewood Drive was at least 600. But yes, it is slightly higher than Edgewood Drive.
Thank you.
As for the rest of the proposals, I know that planning and zoning has come in. We did speak to the dealerships. It came to some agreement. For the police department, it is still our proposal to go ahead and do that. Even though that they have tried to reach out to the drivers, I don't believe there's any way to fully get all the drivers on board. Because they are basically gypsies for hire. They don't know everybody. And in the last week alone, Justin Mueller, we've had three of them that we run off. They were picking up on the proposed area, but to the right, basically blocking that little road there. We had to move one. One was actually on the post road. If he wasn't actually done by the time I saw him, he would have been getting taken. So it's our proposal to keep going forward with the change of the seven parking spots to a loading and unloading zone, which will help alleviate the problem down at Edgewood Drive.
Thank you, sir. Jill had her hand up. And then Katie.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't actually, not that I saw, receive numbers. So just to make sure we're comparing apples to apples, can you go through the two locations? When they were monitored and what the traffic counts were? And if you could send that to us in a document that we could look at, that would be useful as well.
Yes. Again, the Edgewood Avenue, that was done by the GPW between the dates of September 11th and September 18th this year.
All right, that was a 751 cars per day?
Yep. Give me a second.
I, I don't, I don't seem to have my old, my original proposal in front of me. Can't find it. So Ed, Edgewood Avenue is the one.
By Miller Motors.
By Miller Motors. And the, and the other?
Edgewood Drive, Edgewood Drive is down by, next to Porsche.
Yep.
Edgewood Drive. Edgewood Drive was October 15th, 2019, to October 22nd, 2019. That was the average volume per day of 629.1.
629 cars.
Right, per day.
So there's really not a dramatic.
No, no, it's, there's not a big difference. There is slightly more on Edgewood Avenue than Edgewood Drive, which is understandable because Edgewood Drive goes back into, unless you know where you're going. That's the back way to get into Glenville. And you really have to know that.
So you're, you're proposing to move traffic from the street with less traffic, less cars on it to a street to, to block, you know, sort of a strict ease of access to a street that has more vehicle traffic? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct. But we're moving it to the, the one-way portion. And we're not moving it, we're just adding another spot. There's seven spots on that triangle. There are seven parking spots now, which are one-hour spots, which are basically being used by the dealerships for their employees. My proposal is to make that a, no parking, one-hour loading zone only, so that the trucks can use that to load and unload. You can get one, two, two, depending on the size, that's a smaller in there, which would keep the Edgewood Drive from being set down there with Miller Motor Cars, got somebody down there, and they sit there for two to three hours, waiting to unload or pick up. And then somebody else comes in behind them. Now they're on the portion of the roadway where it curves. And they are actually blocking the road. You have to cross the W line totally to get around them on a blind curve. That's the problems that they've been having for the last at least 10 years that I know, where the residents of Edgewood Drive have been complaining, and rightfully so, that they're taking their lives in their hands trying to pass those trucks. So my idea is to alleviate that by giving them one more spot that they can deliver to, and they don't have to sit up and queue.
Yeah. One other question. What is the width of the trucks that you're hoping to relocate to the more heavily trafficked?
Top of my head, I don't know. It's a, it's a standard car barrier, which it's, it's a standard, standard width. I did not expect that question, so I'm not ready to answer that.
Yeah.
But it's, it's basically the same as a large trailer.
Yeah. And I guess we could probably look up, while Ms. Raven asks her question, I'll look up the standard width of the heavy-duty vehicle versus the standard width of a, of a small, of a car. But I, I would, as I said last meeting, I would suggest that, that the sightlines in that location are not great. To say the least, there's a lot of traffic. The turn radius is limited. And I believe that we should be really concerned about unintended consequences of this move.
I do have the stats for you. Radius woodwork from the one-way part onto the left to the two-way part to go back out to the post road. The width of your standard truck is eight to 8.5 feet wide.
And what about a vehicle, what about a standard car?
Your standard car is going to be probably three to four feet shorter because they actually fit inside the wheel track of the truck.
So, yeah, so you're, okay, so you've got, you're hoping to park trucks in, in parking spots that are intended for vehicles further narrowing the driveline, the one-way driveline.
Yes. And if you look at the proposed loading and loading zones that I sent you with the pictures of the triangles, I don't know if you can see this.
Is that in today's package? Because I don't.
It would have been, it would have been in the last package.
Right, I'm going to try to find that one.
It's, once you go on to the one-way portion from the post road, the setback cuts into the island. And there is enough room for trucks to put in there without impeding on the road because that roadway is quite wide. And I'm just trying to see if I did get that road width.
So I don't know if Katie has a question, but while you're looking, I just had a quick question because I've started to drive there a little bit more often after coming from the transfer station. Where, and I noticed that there are cars in all seven spots at like 7:30 in the morning. So where would those employees park instead?
Well, Miller Motor Cars can park in their spots. They have that extra lot on the right-hand side before you get to the two-way portion. The ones for Acura and the other ones, they can either park on their, their respective lots or farther up the road onto their secondary lots that they have for Mercedes. Again, Acura will be, next year, once this COVID has cleared up a little bit more, they're going to be moving out. And the Acura dealer is going to become a Natus Tire, which will alleviate a little more problem there. But they'll be funny, there won't be anybody parking there and off.
Maybe I could, could I jump in at this point? Maybe to give a different perspective? As it relates to the parking, is it okay to do that?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Katie.
Thank you. I mean, just, just as a quick reminder to everybody that the loading zone was, the existing loading zone on Edgewood Drive was created 10-plus years ago or so to deal with the situation where it was just untenable amongst all of the car dealerships. At that time, there was parking by the dealers all along cross tracks of the employee parking. There was car carriers everywhere. And so the original loading zone was created as a way to get them off of the post road and on, onto Edgewood Drive and create a safer condition. And since that time, many of these dealers, including Mercedes, Porsche, BMW, Miller, Audi, they've all come in for site plan approvals. And it's been the thing that the commission has honed in on, on all of these approvals, was we will give you the approval on the condition that your employees have a designated parking area and that there's designated loading and, and unloading. If not on your site, then some approved location that is not the loading zone, with the exception of Porsche, who, who is permitted to use that loading zone as part of their loading and offloading. So when this proposal came up, because as you, as you know, we get, we get calls frequently also about the dangerous. condition that's created on Edgewood Drive due to the gross mismanagement, I'm just going to say it, of who, I don't know, whether it's the dealers as a, you know, as a collaboration of all of the dealers, or if it's these so-called Uber drivers of these trails, whatever it is, there's no management whatsoever, hence the complete waste of the police resources' time to be going out there, and they becoming the de facto manager and traffic cops for this business, frankly. So, so when this proposal came forward, as you know, at your last meeting, it was, it was understood that, that I would go out and have talked to the dealers, because I had noted at the last meeting that I didn't understand why they couldn't do this on their own property or on the off-site locations that have been improved through their approvals, and/or properly manage their, you know, get together and manage this. And I can report that there was an absolutely excellent response from Audi and from Mercedes and from Miller, which are the three dealers that we reached out to. And I just want to read you some of this, because it really was, I think, a wonderful showing of business in the community and how they can respond to issues and how they are good citizens of the community. So this is from Audi, this is from the Vice President and Managing Director of Audi, Tom Bullock. He, he said that he spoke to the General Manager, Chris, Chris Mendocino, who is in the Greenwich office, and directed him to ensure that we are complying with our site plan approvals and with the zoning regulations. To that end, we have removed all vehicles from in front of the Audi Greenwich showroom to provide a designated space for car carriers to load and unload, and we've begun the process of notifying said carriers of the requirement to load and unload vehicles in the designated area. They attached a photograph to show that they have cleared the area that was on their site plan, that it was supposed to be reloading and unloading, that they had been parking cars, or customers had gone there, they just hadn't been complying. Now they're in compliance. Margarita Albin, as you know, the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, she was on these calls. The one that we had with Mercedes was with Mr. Penske himself, and the, the National Manager, the Regional Manager, and Lou, who is the manager of the Greenwich dealership. And he wrote a letter, which he also sent to the Edgewood neighborhoods, apologizing for what, for the problems that have occurred down there. And he said that, you know, they've recently been contacted and asked by the Planning and Zoning Board to reassess the loading and unloading of cars on Edgewood. After assessing the ingress and egress of trucks and, and flatbeds, we made the decision to move all of our vehicle pickups and drop-offs to our main drop zone located on Old Track Road, which is their approved location, in order to alleviate the congestion. The longstanding members of the community are dedicated to the betterment of the town, et cetera, which was the same sentiment we heard from Audi and from Miller. And we had, we didn't get some, a letter from Miller, but they had the same reaction, and they said they're going to clean up their act and go where they're supposed to go. So what happened then was I asked the neighbors that I've been in contact with on Edgewood Drive to let me know how it's going post these letters, and naturally there were a couple of carriers that still came to the site that aren't being informed or what have you. But for the most part, they, it was, you know, dramatically decreased the, some of the issues down there. So, so my, my problem at this point is, or my issue at this point is, not only do I think we should not add a second loading zone, I think we should remove the existing loading zone and have it be for Porsche only. And I say that because I think that there missed, I think there's, it's ripe for mismanagement. We've seen that over the last 10 years. There's no, theoretically, and beyond theoretically, there technically should be no reason for the loading zone at all. And once a carrier, the Uber driver, so to speak, understands that they are going to pick up a Mercedes just to use them, and that there's nowhere to go, they're obviously going to go to Mercedes if they haven't done the smart thing, which is to call ahead, which, to be honest, that was one of the shocking things that came out of this, was there doesn't seem to be good communication between these guys and the dealer, but they will, they will be forced to now. Conversely, based on the conversations we've had and the letters we've, we've received, the dealer themselves are reaching out to these carriers and saying, you cannot make, you cannot give us a bad reputation in the town. We are citizens of this community. Many of us live here. You're not going to ruin our business by making a mess of things. So that, so I think that it's a mismanagement issue. I think it's very dangerous on Edgewood Drive. I myself have been there where there's carriers, and I do very much appreciate the neighbors' concerns about daily having to navigate into the other lane, and it's just dangerous. And the third, the third reason I believe this is the issue that I brought up last time, that I do have a philosophical issue with using town resources to let businesses expand in the way that we're doing it with this loading zone. I think each of them have proven through their engineers and certainly through reality that they can and should be able to comply with their site plan approvals to, to unload and load in their designated areas. And I don't see why we should be using town parking spaces for their employees. I don't see why we should be giving them spaces to do something that they should be doing on their own properties.
Okay.
That's my thoughts on that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Katie. So you're saying is, right now, they seem, the problem seems to be working itself out right now without having to go and add another zone there, you're saying?
That's, that's what we're seeing, but I do fear that without, you know, without staying on this, that it will go back to the way it was, because I presume that's just human nature. And not only that, but that, that's another reason where I think we should just get rid of the loading zone. But it does seem that it is working for now, and it does seem that way, yes.
Okay, thank you. Lauren, Jill, thoughts?
Yes, I, first of all, thank you for all the work that's gone on to address the residents' concern and also to acquire additional information. As I said, I drive that route every day. And I know we're going to talk later about the road closures going on in that area, which is another extraordinarily frustrating experience for residents in that area. And I just think that the unintended consequences will be significant. So I, if, if you were to bring it to a vote, I would vote against it. I would ask that we continue the outreach to the dealerships and, and maybe increase enforcement efforts if we don't get rid of the loading zone. Perhaps we want to increase the fines and have an economic incentive for them to comply with their site plans.
Thank you, Jill. Lauren, any thoughts?
Yeah, that makes sense to me, that since the dealers have been notified that they were not in compliance with their site plan approvals, and they are making a good faith effort, I think it'll be, it'll take a little bit of time. And yes, as Katie said, I think we're going to need to watch it, because if it does start to revert back, then there probably is some teeth that we can put into violations. You know, I was also thinking about the employees' parking. If it's one-hour parking, I don't even remember now if there were meters there on, on a Edgewood. So that might be a possibility too, because if that's being abused, one-hour parking, and someone's there for their entire work shift, maybe something to look into. And it looks like Margarita raised her hand, so I'm not sure if she wants to speak.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I 100% support everything that Katie said. And in addition, though, that Katie and I talked about a backup plan, which that we'd like to discuss with GPD, which is if we ever see significant violation, we, the town steps in and literally hits very hard with the high-cost fines that they were implementing. I think Officer Dret can confirm, but those were $92. And we just hit hard and make it very clear, and we'll follow up with a round of phone calls with the dealers. But I 100% agree with where Katie has gone with this. She's right, we should not be giving uptown resources to accommodate people running their businesses badly. Okay, that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Margarita. Mr. P, thank you for your, all your work on this, and Katie and our Police Department. Traffic technician, Drenth, has been working on this for a while, so all these efforts have helped here. And I think we're, we're going in a good place here. And I know some of the residents have, from the beginning, advocated what Katie is saying today, which is all the loading zone. I think what we'll do is, let's revisit this in two weeks and get, and check back again, and see if there's another step that we need to take going forward. But I would put the hold on the, the alternate site there right now, at a difference from, for what we've heard today and from what they're doing, making progress. And they've admitted that there was some mismanagement there, and that the residents did have, you know, have a right to complain. And whenever there's a public safety issue, we, we have to act. And so I think, let's revisit it in two weeks and probably make a final decision there on what we do. But if everybody's okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. Well, thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. It's, it's good news. It's going in the right direction. So, thank you. With that, we will go on to the last item of all business, which is an update on the parking of RVs on public roads. I don't know if we want to put this up for a vote in two weeks, but I certainly think that, you know, I'd like to have a, this a brief discussion now on, not so much the parking of RVs on private property, however aggravating that is to people and unsightly. And I think that's just a whole nother, you know, issue there. But certainly, parking commercial and RV vehicles, RVs on public roads in residential areas do create issues. I know in our, our neighborhood, I'm getting calls from people, and it is, it creates a sightline problem. And I've, myself, almost gotten an accident about two weeks ago because I couldn't see. And it's not always there, and I think if we can craft some type of language where if somebody had to leave it out there for a week or two, for, you know, draw up some guidelines, that's fine. But I think that the permanency is what's driving people crazy. And, you know, if you live in one of these neighborhoods, it, it does, it does become an issue. So I'm more, you know, the aesthetics aside, which again is, is, is part of this, but the main thing is the public safety issue that it presents when, when sightlines are blocked. So I would like to bring this up, you know, as a traffic authority for some type of finality in the next, you know, two weeks. But I wanted to hear my colleagues' thoughts on that. Any opinions or?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to understand, and I don't know where we would get this data, Fred, you know, how, how frequent is this occurring? You know, kind of where is it occurring? I'm just getting the first sense, because I think my original sightings were in private driveways. So now if I'm going to think about it just in public spaces, I, I do see in many neighborhoods, you know, commercial vehicles parked for a long period of time. So, you know, where do we draw the line? You know, is there, is it a size of vehicle, you know, that, that, you know, I guess I just need a little bit more clarity.
Sure. And do we leave it at RVs? Do we include commercial vehicles, which I think are not allowed right now anyway. But we're, again, talking about private property, residential neighborhoods. I can tell you, if you go down where I live, you'll see one. And the people, you know, they keep their houses up very nice. Everybody does. So, you know, while it does create an aesthetic issue, it, where this particular vehicle is parked, and again, I've had people calling me on it now. I myself almost got hit two weeks ago. So you could come by anytime and see right there in, coming down MacArthur onto Halsey at the intersection. It's just, you know, to me, again, it's the, God forbid, now that we've been put on notice, if we don't do anything and, and there's an accident, they're going to say, well, why didn't you do something? And I agree, you need to, you need, we need to have parameters. We need to, you know, have size in there and what type. So I certainly can circle back with you guys on that, get some more data for discussion, if that's okay. Jill, any thoughts?
Sorry, I had to unmute. I agree with Lauren. I need a little bit more understanding of what, you know, how, how we want to frame this as a, as a problem, and is it, whether, actually, we still have Town Planner DeLuca on the, on the line, so maybe she can respond whether there's anything in the zoning regulations that would apply that restrict. I, I need to understand a little bit more about our residential parking program, and whether for street cleaning purposes or other purposes, people have to move their cars, things like that before we, I, I would just want to have a broader conversation as opposed to, it sounds to me, if it's just a, an individual case, and perhaps one that's derived from COVID, it might just be a neighborhood issue. I don't.
Yeah, it's, in this particular one, it's not, but there, there have been other ones. But Margarita's on, I don't know if she wants to jump in here, but certainly we can get some, some language out in front of you. And again, I've given you an address where you can both go and take a look.
Yeah.
Because it is a, if there's a sight issue, and, you know, we have, we already have rules about where people, if they're growing bushes and brush in their corners of the yards and it's blocking a sightline, the town does go and see them and tells them to cut, cut it down. This would be similar to that, only this is a movable object. This is a, a big vehicle that, we're not talking a pickup truck. We're talking RV. I don't want to say what the vehicle is in my neighborhood, because I don't want people going there, but it's big. And they're calling, you know, they're either calling or stopping me. And again, I, it happened to me, so I know it's an issue. And maybe, you know, even if there was only once, one of these instances in the last 10 years, which I know there's been more, I still think we should probably have something, and maybe Katie and Margarita could weigh in, something on the books there, just so it's lenient, it's certainly, you know, understanding of somebody who needs to park somebody, something there for a brief period of time. But the permanency of some of these things, I think, is what causes a little bit of concern. I don't know if Katie or Margarita want to just weigh in on that, if you've heard anything about some of these instances where sightlines are blocked?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that is the problem, when the sightlines obviously are blocked, and that's not acceptable. But in terms of having an RV on a property, it is permitted as long as it's not being used as a dwelling unit, so to speak. So if you, if you just own one and you, you know, take it out in the summers or whatever, then, then they are allowed. So that, you know, and we've gone out to this particular one, I think this is the one in Byron we're talking about, and we did talk to them and solve the initial zoning, zoning violation. So that's, I believe, been corrected. But the sightline thing, yeah, that's, that's just a given on, you know, you can't create sightline issues. That's not even a zoning issue. That's just, period. They wouldn't want that, yeah. So, but from the zoning standpoint, they are allowed as long as they are not plugged in and being used on the property.
Katie, what about if they're on the road, though? If they're in front of someone's house, or across the street from someone's house, or around the corner from someone's house, which is happening, and you can't see?
Yeah, then, I hate to say, then I've got to direct that to, to Mark Marino, and, and that's, now becomes a parking services issue, as opposed to zoning issue.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Very good. I'll, I will circle back with Deputy Chief Marino on that, too. There may be a couple places, but we want to respond to the people that are, are asking, and just to let them know, and, and to fairness to the people who own, own these vehicles, just to give them a heads up, too, so they know what they can and can't do.
Absolutely. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. All righty. All right. I think we've gotten through that one, so that's good. So on to new business. Then we have the road closure at Rear Road Avenue and Prospect Street. And I believe Tracy is on with us. I saw her before. Is, do we know if Tracy's on?
If Tracy is, could you raise your hand, please?
This one telephone number ends in 4635.
Well, you can click star nine if you're the caller on the phone and you want to raise your hand.
Um, well, you can click star nine if you're the caller on the phone and you want to raise your hand.
Yeah, I don't think that's Tracy. And she's got another number. Okay, well, if there's no one here from EverSource, we're going to have to skip over that. We will next go to the road closure at Teconic and North Stanwych Road for the reservoir water pipe issue. And we have Jim Parlenti and Adnan Tarabi on. And I believe our Marshal Mark Dawson has also joined us. So if anybody there, I see Mark put his hand up. Morning, Mark. You gonna unmute?
Good morning, Commissioner. How are you today?
Good, Mark. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Um, I'm going to move you up. Okay, and I have the maps on my screen that I can share. Mark, I have the maps up if you'd like me to share them. Otherwise, if you want to share them, I can make you the call. You need to unmute yourself.
Sorry. Uh, yeah, if you could share them, that'd be great. I have, uh, another slide that I'd like to show in my background when the time comes.
Okay, um, I'll start with, I, well, I'm going to, I'll share my screen. You tell me if it's the right.
Yeah, that's the right one. Map, I can send it to, uh, you Commissioner for review. But basically our response times, uh, increase significantly with this detour that's proposed. The normal response to the intersection of North Stanwych at Teconic Road from Station Eight, which is the North Street Station by the Mayor Parkway is three minutes, 39 seconds. With a delay going all the way to Banksville, uh, and this proposed detour that I see in front of us would be to go all the way up to Banksville Avenue, cross to Teconic, down to reach the Farms Road area. And that increased to six minutes and 32 seconds, um, which is way, way more time that is acceptable for this closure. Station seven, which is the Banksville Helper Station out of Banksville or Volunteer System, they're four minutes and 39 seconds to that intersection. The reason why that's critical and several reasons, and I hold up my second map, which is our mapping program. And again, I apologize. This program shows us our water supply for that area. I don't know if you can see that. It's kind of hard to see. But, uh, right at Farms Road is a dry hydrant that we utilize for our water supply for any structure fires in that area. The another, another dry hydrant is on North Stanwych at, across from Cameron Drive. And then we have a cistern that is all the way down on Crown Lane. All of these water supplies are important for that area. By this, uh, detour that is proposed, and I was hoping to get more information from Aquarian today in this meeting, is that that section of roadway cuts us off from valid or important water supply for the, for the residents in that area. So it's a twofold thing. I don't know if they're going to be totally closing the total road. Based on what's presented here, it says that they're going to be closed at 289. And again, uh, across from, uh, the North, North Stanwych, uh, road. So this is all pertinent area for us. If Aquarian, uh, is going to be doing this work and the road would be open for the nighttime, there are several ways that we can address this. One by manning an engine, uh, standby for the work hours from eight to four or eight to five, whatever they're going to be working. And put an engine up in that area. So there's protection in that detour then doesn't become an obstacle for us. Or, uh, they have to maintain a lane of travel throughout the day for our apparatus to get by there. The other thing that's significant about this particular section, this project, I should say, is in the Howard Road, uh, section. When they approach that, there's going to be a cut of 29 feet deep. And that's an extremely, uh, deep trench area. And I've already expressed concern to the onsite engineer up there in regards to, you know, our notification for our technical rescue response. God forbid something happens up there 29 feet. It needs to be an engineered trench, which they do have under control. But again, all these factors come into play in this, in this particular, uh, section.
Thank you, Mark. I don't see if, uh, do we know who the 617 number is, if that is? When the attendees is from EverSource?
I can, let me just unmute them. I'll allow them to talk if they'd like to.
Thank you. Or Aquarian, I'm sorry.
Would the person on the phone like to speak if you can unmute yourself? If you don't have anything to say, you don't have to. But if you are able to unmute your phone and speak.
Okay. We'll have to, Tracy, we're going to go, go circle back to Tracy in a minute for the last item. She's joined us now, but, um, Mark, well, I guess we'll, uh, we'll have to contact them, Jim and Adnan and see what happened. But maybe we'll talk later today and, and set up something with them and then have them come back, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that, that's fine. Again, our concerns is our response to the residents up there for the, for any, uh, fires or, or water source needs. You know, those dry hydrants also are used by Stanford for their response in that East Middle Penn, uh, Padden, property area too, which is in, uh, off of Teconic. So they are kind of important to us and, and we need to, to have input in, in when these things come.
All right, I'll try and track down Jim's number. I think he's with, uh, VD Excavators actually. So I'll, I'll track them down today and then, and reach out to you.
I appreciate it, Commissioner.
Thank you. Appreciate that, that update and we'll, we'll circle back later.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh, then we'll go, uh, back to the other item on the Railroad Avenue and Prospect Street closure with Tracy Alston. Good morning, Tracy.
Good morning. I apologize. Um, seemed to be a break in communication. I thought my contractor was going to be on because I told him I couldn't be in two places at one time.
Thank you for joining us.
I appreciate you guys putting up with this as always. This was part two of the last presentation that we had talked about. We did successfully get the manhole installed, um, on railroad that went with that, without a hitch, which was, is always great to hear. We did meet with Jim Michael, um, with regards to the second position, which originally was going to be on Prospect closer to, um, railroad. He, the preference was to go more towards the sidewalk at actually the intersection of Bridge and Prospect.
Excuse me, would you like me to show the illustration?
I'm scared to see what they submitted, but sure.
Yeah. And would you like, I'm going to move you up to the panel so people can see it as well.
Thank you. Wait. Start my video. Okay, here we go. So, okay, I'm trying to see where's this. So where it says the new manhole that's being installed at that corner, it's actually a two-family house that has a bunch of let hedges, um, along the Bridge Street side. But there seems to be enough, it's, it's a little tight. We did do a test pit to ensure that we weren't going to be conflicting with any of, uh, the sewer and other utilities in there. And it actually, your right of the town, right away actually falls into where their hedges are. So we're, we're going to have to pull up their hedges. And we're actually in the process of connecting with the customer. We would restore everything back. They'll actually get new. I just, um, it actually is probably going to be an upgrade. But at this point, everything seems to be good. DPW was in agreement with the positioning. Again, it would be about a half day. And I believe the days that the contractor initially submitted, he did not realize that Monday was a holiday. So it definitely will not take place on the 12th. He had requested either, um, the Friday, uh, let me check my calendar. The 16th or either the 19th. I personally would go for the 19th Fridays. They're just, to me, never a good day to do anything like this. Kind of like nobody wants a meeting on Friday. I don't think that they should attempt this one on Friday either. I think it should be a Monday. So I would request the 19th with a rain date of the 20th, just in case. Again, half, I think the last time we actually finished under three hours. So I don't see this one being beyond that as well. And the restoration portion, we will not need to have any interference as far as traffic once we go to restore, um, the resident's property. There's a landscape, professional landscaper in for that.
Okay. So thank you. And I'm, I'm okay with the 19th. I'll, uh, we'll see what Jill and Lauren think. We were going to start at 10 o'clock, if my memory is correct.
Correct. We, we did wait until the 10 o'clock, which was a very good idea. Uh, if you want the same, we can definitely stick to the 10 AM on this one as well.
Yeah, I mean, whether it's 10 or nine, it's still going to bring us up to lunchtime. So we were, I think we all agreed at 10 o'clock. So, um, if, uh, there's no objections from Jill or Lauren, then I see Jill waving her hand.
I miss Jill.
Can you unmute?
Hello, Ms. Tracy. Have you been down to this area at all?
Yes, multiple times.
It is a maze, actually, given that one can't turn on to, I'm trying to think of which road it is that you can't, the, the name of, uh, whether it's Old Field Point Road. You can't, uh, navigate around that area easily. And I hadn't really paid attention to it until we got the road closure notice. And I realized that, uh, half of the roads are closed almost all of the time. The supervision is sometimes directing traffic and often not. And, um,
Okay.
And, um, and so Prospect is actually the only clear route based on the lights where you can get through. It adds an extra, I was,
Yes.
And, you know, and I, I've been working on my timing for years now. And I'm almost down to like a five to seven minute late, except 10, extra 10 minutes just to navigate around. So I guess my question really is, that's my prelude to, uh, as a resident, to express my frustration.
I drove it to, to see what would happen. So I, I am so with you, Ms. Jill. That is what it'd be worth.
And it backs up onto the post road now because everyone now knows that if you try to cut, I'm glad they didn't do the traffic counts on the Edward Avenue now because you can't take that traffic cut and expect to make the right turn off of railroad to cross under the overpass to get to the Bell Haven Peninsula or I-95. People don't know that you're going to have to circumvent around. And if somebody's making a left turn across the way, you're going to miss the light entirely.
Yes, it.
Prospect, however, you can still cross and get a light and try to get across the road, albeit with an additional 10 minutes. My question is, what are you doing with the other road closures at the same time as you're closing down Prospect? Can you open them up so that there's, there's a different maze and allow, or they, or is the whole area shut down, basically?
So true. So there were two parts of this project as you, so this was all part of the substation project. So this piece actually is, um, related to the distribution portion. And I know we're on restoration with regards to the transmission side. So I can follow up. I believe they are, they should be close to, if not done, with their restoration as far as that area being locked down. And I can confirm with the construction manager on the transmission side.
Well, they're definitely not done, having driven.
No, 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 I don't mean now. I think, I know, uh, because I'll have the update on Friday, but I'll call the construction manager to see, to make sure that there's not a conflict or see if I can get him somewhere else that day. Cause yeah, it, it was a little nerve wracking even walking it to be honest with you, trying to cross the street with little Harry. So I, I totally hear your concern. I don't know, um, what's on schedule for then. And I knew distribution was trying to go later so that there wouldn't be so many closures on that part. So if you'd like, um, I will, I can send an email to you all to confirm later today after I follow up with the construction manager on the transmission side.
Yeah.
That's, that's a valid concern, Jill, and I definitely will follow up on that first.
Yeah, I, so I know, you know, you're asking for approval. Yeah, I, so I know, you know, you're asking for approval in a period that we don't have another meeting scheduled. And I obviously want to see the project completed. And I am also concerned that nothing goes wrong if you're digging that close to the side of the road. There's also a childcare center right across the street. So to the extent that you have a crane working in that area, there are a lot of people that walk to that daycare center. I am a little concerned about safety there as well. I just want to make sure that you're thinking through all of the implications of, of that work as, as well. Recognize that you need the closure, and I appreciated the fact that the last one happened seamlessly. However, it's the, it's, it's gotten really, it's rough over there.
No, understood. Um, so one, we, we rely, first of all, safety is our number one. We don't want anyone hurt. Just even beyond our employees, we, we don't want any residents or anybody having issues. And so we do take safety as a priority, which is why at times we've even been told we overhire with police. But to me, I prefer to be better safe than sorry. So we would definitely have the work zone corded off and, and be mindful as far as pedestrian. I think the and not to dismiss it, and that's what I, I am confident that that will be addressed.
Okay.
I think my biggest concern is being able to follow back up with you with regards to any additional openings that we can do to alleviate or at least ease some of that, that backup. I think what I would ask then is if I can at least look for approval contingent upon the follow-up that I'm able to do with you and if you're willing to accept it electronically.
Yes. Thank you. I would appreciate that.
Okay.
It, it makes sense to me. And I just had a quick question because you're trying to stagger and keep certain things open. Is there a criticality to having this done, you know, by the nineteen?
So the reason that we need to get this manhole done, so just to give you an update, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware, so we are actually looking to have everything live with regards to the new substation and transmission line by the twenty-eighth. And we made a commitment to Mr. Grandoff as well, as far as final restoration. And we want to be able to get the paving completed, both just with this weird weather, just don't let the plants shut down on us. And so they're really trying to get everything done prior to, say, holidays and before they actually have to go live. So the manholes actually will hold the infrastructure that is critical to them being able to finalize that. So that, that's kind of the push on it. These are like the last two big pieces.
Thank you. Say you muted.
Ari. Okay, are we, are we okay with then the, then nineteenth from ten to one?
Contingent upon
Contingent upon me following up.
Yeah, yeah. So
One other thing, will you let the daycare center know that you're putting a crane and opening up the road?
We, we notify anytime that we have work like that, we always do notify the neighboring residents so that they're in full aware. Especially, they'll still have access to their home. There may be a delay if, depending on what, where the position is. So we always give them a heads up. That would never, we don't blindside. That could be a problem.
Right, but also the, the businesses in that area.
Correct. And it will also, just as before, be included in the weekly construction update that we also put out on the electronic blast.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, well, thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, as always. Sorry, sorry that I may have messed up your agenda today, so.
It was fine. We just rearranged the order, so.
You need a vote, right, Fred?
I'm sorry?
We need a vote, right?
Well, contingent upon, yes. So is there a motion to?
Warren Raven, I motion to approve the road closure at the corner of Railroad Avenue and Prospect Street, contingent upon additional information from EverSource regarding the staggering of the other complete closures in that vicinity.
Fair enough.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that.
Hey, thank you. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander's a yes.
Lauren Raven's a yes.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Tracy. Alrighty, with that, I don't see any other items on the agenda. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Two nominations, Fred.
Okay. Another thing there. Okay, thank you.
Sure. So we learned that we actually had another open spot on the Board of Parks and Recreation. So I motion to nominate Angela Swift as a new regular member to the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So just, just for clarification, Ms. Swift, and I saw you call Lauren, but I didn't, it didn't come up until I was already on this call. That was the candidate who we interviewed, who was thinking about the board, the foundation board?
No.
Am I thinking the same? No.
Angelo, we did Angela and Sue Botson at the same time, and they were both great candidates. And there wasn't any other spots. We found out that Tommy McGarrett, who I just saw this morning, I thought he had resigned, and he said he had resigned, but apparently he was still on the board. So I asked that, that he submit his resignation in an email last week. So it's, that's, that's what's creating this opening now and
And, and we learned about it, too, because we had originally nominated Sue Botson for a term ending on twenty twenty-three, but the the nomination was I'm trying to think of the word. I can't think of the word. It was redone at the RTM meeting for a shorter term, which didn't make sense. It's because she was actually, the way they nominate is to nominate the positions that were open the longest. So she's already resigned from the board. She was filling that spot. And then we learned about the other position being open, and that was confirmed by the co-chairman, Scott.
Right, right. Okay. I'll second the nomination.
Okay, okay. Thank you. All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander's a yes.
Lauren Raven's a yes. And then I have a second nomination to, I have a second one, to nominate Stephanie Johnson as a new member to the Board of Ethics to fill a vacancy term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that nomination.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander's a yes.
Lauren Raven is a yes.
Okay, and that's, that's it. Thank you for bringing that to our attention and those two candidates. Glad to get them on. We'll let them know. With that, is there any other business coming before the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Lauren Raven, I motion to adjourn at eleven twenty-four.
Jill Oberlander, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Jill Oberlander, yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great day. See you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, and thanks.